Uh, tomorrow briefly for the day and then I'll be back up here for the rest of the week.
Okay, we've got you've got to trounce through the river with me.
There you go, it's fun, it's fun stuff. All right, we're all we're on, we're live now where they can tell Audrey is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the town of Camden Select Board Meeting for July twenty fourth first two thousand two thousand twenty. This evening, we're going to start with some procedural matters which we normally do in our open town meeting, but we don't have that this year. And it's the organizational meeting that we normally do. The first item on that agenda is swearing in newly elected board members by the town moderator, in this case, I believe it's going to be Dave Morrison. But before we start swearing, I thought would be a good idea to thank Audra and the staff and especially Ken and Katrina for the job they did during the election. I mean, they processed about fifteen hundred absentee ballots. Seven hundred people showed up at the polls that day and it went off without a hitch. That's a, that's pretty impressive. So with that, we should proceed with the swearing in, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Bob, and good evening, everybody. This is sort of a first, so I will ask you to bear with me. As Bob said, normally this is done at the town meeting in the day following the election, but we're going to do it this evening. So I have oaths with me and I'm going to ask Bob and Allison one at a time to go through them and then you can sign them the next time you're in the town office. So Allison, if you don't mind, I'd like to start with you. So if you would raise your right hand and just repeat after me and I'll try and and make this relatively smooth. I, Allison McKeller, do swear.
I, Allison McKeller, do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay.
Nothing about.
Just say again.
Nothing about that was it?
No, there's, there's two more phrases. I, Allison McKeller, do swear.
I, Allison McKeller, do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities.
That I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
As select board member.
As select board member.
Until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
For the town of Camden.
For the town of Camden.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and the laws of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Allison McKeller, do swear.
I, Allison McKeller, do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities.
And I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities.
All duties incumbent upon me.
All duties incumbent upon me.
Pursuant to all charters.
Pursuant to all charters.
Ordinances, policies, and rules.
Ordinances, policies, and rules.
And administer, interpret, and act upon.
And administer, interpret, and act upon.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, Bob, if if you would, if you could raise your right hand. I, Bob Falchiani, do swear.
I, Bob Falchiani, do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I shall remain a citizen thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Robert Falchiani.
I, Robert Falchiani.
Do swear that I will faithfully discharge.
Do swear that I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
As select board member until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
As select board member until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
For the town of Camden.
For the town of Camden.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Robert Falchiani, do swear.
I, Robert Falchiani, do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities.
That I will faithfully discharge the best of my abilities.
All duties incumbent upon me.
All duties incumbent upon me.
Pursuant to all charters.
Pursuant to all charters.
Ordinances, policies, and rules.
Ordinances, policies, and rules.
And administer, interpret, and act upon.
And administer, interpret, and act upon.
Thank you very much and congratulations.
Thanks for your help, Dave. Appreciate it very much.
My pleasure.
I, I'd like to step in here really quick as the the longest serving member. I would like to move forward with nominating people for the chairman and vice chairman and I'd like to nominate the two new people, Robert, is that it? Bob? Falchiani for chairman and is it Ally McKeller? Allison McKeller for vice chairman.
I will second those nominations.
All in favor? Let let me go, I gotta do this. Mark, hi. Jenna.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi, thank you.
And Bob.
Hi, thank you also.
And I would like to, I'd like to welcome our two new members and great success and we hope we'll have a great run with you.
Well, I can assure you, we'll we'll be relying on your experience. So thank you very much. With that said, we we have to move on to a couple of other organizational meeting issues, which is the reappointment of the town attorney for the term of July one, twenty twenty through June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Chris went to Article four of the town charter.
Kind of funny that I'm in his office right now. I'm so moved.
Okay, second.
All right, any discussion? Not hearing any roll call vote, vote, Mark.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Jenna.
I, I'm not even one of the new ones, I.
I also, Allison.
Hi.
Bob and Allison, you'll get used to this.
Give us a few, give us a few weeks.
They'll get more comfortable.
Okay, item, item five would be the reappointment of the following for ensuing for the ensuing year pursuant to Article two of the town charter. That would be the police chief, Randy Gagny, fire chief.
Chris Farley.
Yes, I guess.
You'll learn the people as well.
My favorite overseer, the poor general assistance director, Jan Estacy.
He's since.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote Allison.
I.
Jenna.
I.
Taylor. Hi.
Mark.
I.
Bob, I also, thank you very much. Before we get into the regular agenda, just wanted to cover item three, which is a, we put on a discussion of the rules of order to be followed with select board meetings. Normally, we would, you know, approve these as a matter of course also at our first select board meeting. But there, but but we thought, one of my thoughts was we might be able to discuss perhaps doing a review with the select board as some near term date to review them and and make sure that they, you know, what they were, you know, exactly what, but please, any comments from anybody else on the select board? Allison.
Yeah, I also feel that they deserve a little bit more review than have had in the past. Just even some little things that occasionally come up during the year where, you know, one of us or a member of the public says, well, hey, this wasn't supposed to be done like this. And and then we're reminded, well, it says it here and you voted on it at the beginning of the year and we say, oh, right. But one of the things that jumps out to me even is just like notice of meetings and policies and procedures for changing that or when we say we're going to publish something in the newspaper, what does that mean and which, you know, which newspapers and why? And so I guess my hope would be that we, I have a few things in mind, but I'll try to get them. I don't, I don't know what the right procedure is in terms of how we would talk about all this. Are you suggesting a workshop or that we would just all submit our own?
I, I think it's it's important enough to have a mini workshop. I think it just, I don't, we have to schedule right this moment, but I think we need to do it sooner than later. I think they'll be more productive so we can all play. I prefer that than comments from emails because then it has to go back and forth too much. I think we're, we're really good at the five of us sitting down and going through these things. So what I will do after this meeting is try to pick your brains for schedules, probably August because we're running out of July next week. But Audra.
Um, I'd recommend that maybe, you know, we're, we're have an agenda item to set up another workshop. So maybe the beginning of that workshop, you can kind of figure out the rules.
Sounds good to me.
Also, it might be helpful to beforehand, if if all of you have some ideas to to send them through and Bob and I can compile them so that we have something to work from, from the very beginning. And one thing I would recommend you put on there is like procedures around the formation of the agenda. So if somebody has an agenda item, whether it be a member of the select board or the public, all of you agreeing to how items get on the agenda for the upcoming meeting.
I'll make sure I push to solicit for those comments before whatever date we set at the end of this meeting for that session. That's right. We can, we can combine, no problem.
Or we can just keep, you know, Bob and I can scream at each other every couple of weeks and settle it that way.
We're not going to eliminate that fun.
No.
Worked so far.
Absolutely. Okay, good. That's what we'll do with that. Then I think it's a great idea. Then going back really to our normal, more normal agenda start, which would be public input on non-agenda items. I don't believe we have any of those that I'm aware of. No? Okay, good. Then we would move to approval of the board minutes from July seven, twenty twenty. Does any of the board members have any comments or a motion to accept those board minutes?
I did have a couple. Go ahead. I look for it.
Mark, go ahead.
On section number five. Hold on, I have to pull it up. The computer is working quite slowly. It says a conversation being called a public discussion on racial racial just. I believe that should say justice. So I want to make sure that's worded properly. And then the last note in the wastewater. Oh, no, that's for later on. That was my note for that, note for right now.
Okay.
May have been something else.
Okay.
But that's what I saw.
Okay, fine.
I make a motion we approve with that correction.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? A roll call vote Allison.
I.
Jenna. Jenna. Taylor.
I'm sorry, I, I was muted, sorry.
Taylor.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
And Bob, I also, thank you unanimously. Great. Let's, I'm going to do a swapero here because we have a lot of people on for a discussion on the advisory lanes, correct, Audra? And but no sense of holding them up from their precious evenings in this warm summer night. So welcome you all. Nice to see your smiling faces, except for you, Dave. But we wanted to start the discussion here. I don't know who wants to lead the discussion, but let's we're obviously talking about the potential treatment of, if you want to call it that, of mechanic street, which has recently been wonderfully repaved. And do the best we can to make bikes and cars get along to with each other. So Jim, do you want to lead off? And you're the coalition and
Yeah, can I introduce how this all started?
Say what?
Can I introduce how all this started? The genesis of all this?
You, you guys go for it.
Okay, so back on June twenty-third, I had Jim Tassi, Angela King, myself, Audra, and Chief Gagny all met and we walked mechanic street and we're looking for opportunities to try and follow through with some of the things that we outlined in our budget presentation about complete streets and also tying in, you know, some traffic calming. And there's different ways of doing that and that was what the discussion was all about. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I asked Jim to come down and and help us with that. And he's helped us with some ideas. And that is what he's going to present at this point in time. And maybe he's going to talk a little bit about some of the ideas and other places that are using those ideas. And I guess this will just evolve from there. I mean, this is a work in progress. It's our commitment to kind of work with making all of the streets more of a multimodal complete street model and build off of that. So and also try to slow down traffic and make it safer for everybody. So Jim, that's my pitch and introduction.
Well, just to add a, just to look a little bit. So the paving that was done on mechanic street, that's really going to be good for, I'd say, four to five years top. So this really gives us a good opportunity to test something and, you know, see if it's a way that we can meet some of the goals that we talked about at the pedestrian safety forum. And, you know, some of the, build on some of the great work that the pathways committee has been doing for years and some of the things that they've been advocating for. So I just wanted to add those, those two things before Jim got started.
Well, welcome, Jim.
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here and let me commend you guys for just even having the conversation about, you know, improving the conditions of your roadways for people walking and biking. I mean, the bicycle coalition of Maine is committed to preserving the safety, convenience, and access of vulnerable users. And it's always great to work with towns that are seeing how important that is. So thanks for having me here. What I'd like to do is actually run through a slide deck and and if I could have permission to share the screen, it looks like I'm clear to do that. I'm going to try to do it and I will just run through a quick presentation and then take some questions. That's probably the best way to go. Let me just get, so you should be seeing my non presenter mode version of this.
That's what it is.
Let me just get into that mode. There. So you should be now be seeing the entire screen occupying with an image of a family on a bike lane that we actually painted in South Portland. This is the first demonstration project we ever did. Everyone can see that. Nod your heads affirmatively if you can. Okay, good, very good. So I just want to flip through a few slides that talk about, you know, the, the role of advisory lanes on mechanic street. Talk a little bit about why calm traffic in the first place, if that's not obvious, will be pretty quick. Talk a little bit about what advisory lanes are. As Dave suggested, I am going to show you a couple of slides from places around the state where we've worked to get advisory lanes installed in other places. I did solicit some feedback from Scarborough, which has probably the the largest and most heavily used advisory lane at this point or condition in the state. And so I have some choice quotes from some folks there. And then we'll, you know, dig into mechanic street a little bit more. And it's not a very long slide deck, so I think it's going to go pretty quickly. To begin with, of course, you know, calming traffic is important because speed is, speed makes everything worse is what I've started saying. If you're, if you're going fast and you, you know, you need to stop, the faster you go, the longer it takes for you to react and then the longer it takes for your car to physically come to a stop. So it's very important to calm traffic in order to keep people safe in, you know, downtown contexts and certainly contexts that are not intended for, you know, long distance rural travel. Of course, distraction is endemic now on the American roads. You know, this guy's got this kind of a dated photograph because he's got a BlackBerry, but I think the, the type is still very prevalent on main roads. People talking, looking at the phone, drinking coffee and kind of paying attention to the road, but this guy doesn't appear to be at all. But calming traffic forces people to kind of pay attention a little bit more. With every mile per hour that you go faster than the posted speed limit or, you know, period, you know, the lethality of any kind of crash increases. So twenty miles per hour, you have about and, you know, an eighteen percent risk of fatality. When you get up to forty miles per hour, it's about a seventy-seven per chance that you're going to die if you get hit by a car. Somewhere in the middle there is thirty miles per hour is a fifty percent chance. And and I, I just call your attention to the graphic at the top here. The coalition is just kicked off its Slow Me Down campaign, which is a campaign dedicated to trying to get drivers around the state to embrace, you know, the norm of driving at or below the speed limit in any context that's, you know, forty miles per hour and under. Because it is so important to safety and those contexts, you know, anything that's posted forty and under is generally in a place that, you know, people are likely to be walking or bicycling. Certainly any kind of residential neighborhood context, people really need to obey the speed limit. So the coalition is trying to reestablish a social norm where people will do just that. And if you're interested, you can go to our website, bikemain.org, sign the, the support letter and we'll send you a sticker you can put on your car so that if the guy behind you is wondering why you're going twenty-five into twenty-five, the Slow Me Down sticker is intended to be a sort of indicator that you're one of those people who actually believes people should obey speed limits. What are advisory lanes? So advisory lanes are a experimental treatment right now under the MUTCD. They've been around for better than ten years. They go by various names. They're called sometimes dashed bike lanes, advisory shoulders, advisory bike lanes, or edge lanes. And in short, what they are is, you know, a pavement marking for roadways in which dash lines about four inches wide are placed five to six feet from the edge of the road, creating a condition with two dashed shoulders and a center lane, which can be anywhere from, you know, ten to eighteen feet, depending on the guidance that you follow and the context that you have available. There is no center stripe used with an advisory condition. So as the image down on the bottom here suggests, what you have is two shoulders on either side of a center lane. And the center lane is a little bit narrower in most cases than, you know, a normal traveling or actually it's not that much narrower. The, the advisory lane is moving towards the mainstream. You know, incrementally, it is now included in the federal highways rural design guide and that was some of the guidance that I relied on in drawing up the conceptual ideas for mechanic street. It is widely used in Europe. This guy, Michael Williams, who I reference as well as a, a design source, has, has a nice kind of summary of, of how Denmark and the Netherlands are using this this particular treatment quite extensively. And it's, it's a great way to actually carve out a little bit of space on a narrow road for bicycles and in some cases walkers to use and still preserve throughput for cars. Because the dash lane indicates that it's okay for the car to encroach on that lane when it's safe to do so. So the idea is, as this previous slide just show you the this sign right here, this shows you the kind of operational guidance that is, should be followed when using the advisory lanes. You're stay in the center lane when it's safe to do so. But if you're encountering a car, you just move into the, the advisory or edge line part of the roadway. And certainly if there are bikers or pedestrians, you yield to them and wait until it's safe to do that. So advisory lanes can function as a tool for calming traffic by removing that center line, imparting a more local rural feed to a roadway. There is a, a, a transportation professor up in Yumein, Orono, Pear Garter, who introduced me to the concept of traffic calming through ambiguity. And I think that at least initially, until you're, until you're used to the facility, that's sort of what's going on with a, with an advisory lane condition is that, you know, the, the drivers are you know, interacting in a way that, that puts them kind of on alert. They slow down, they're more attentive. But by getting rid of that center line, you also create a roadway that feels less like, you know, a highway. And certainly it, it preserves a kind of rural character of the road. Michael Williams in his guidance talks about how traffic calming is really, you know, created in part by that narrower center lane because it actually creates a condition where the cars, they know they're not going to be able to squeeze by each other. And so they know they're going to have to slow down and move laterally across. And I, I included this because I, I feel guilty of this in the projects that I've designed. I have held to, you know, a kind of a five foot edge lane condition and you know, really kind of made the center lane perhaps wider than it needs to be under his guidance. But I think that it is arguable that you know, a slightly narrower center lane condition may in some regards be actually a little bit safer because it makes it clear that the cars are going to need to move into the edge lane. So it removes some ambiguity, but it also, you know, creates a situation where they know they're going to have to kind of negotiate each pass with the cars that they encounter. So these are just some shots of projects that have been done around Maine. This is Morton Road in Yarmouth. This, this was, this might have been the first advisory lane in the state. Worked with the, the Yarmouth Bike Ped Committee on this project. You can see that they used the sign. We have the design file for this, so you can actually make this sign using a file that we can provide you with. We actually stole this sign from Hanover, New Hampshire, which was the first place we'd seen this. Yarmouth is so kind of sold on advisory lanes that they have done another one on a bridge that was where they wanted to actually get a sidewalk, but there was no room for it. So they did it with paint. And we are in the process of kind of designing another pretty ambitious project for them that will probably cover about a mile and a half of neighborhood roadway where people just feel it the cut through traffic is too fast and there's not a safe place to walk and they're trying to figure out a way to, to again carve out a little space for people to walk and bike safely. This is another advisory lane condition in gray right near the library. The library is just to the right of the, the larger image here. This is one that we painted ourselves. The Yarmouth one was actually done with the striping crew. But this was just because, again, people wanted to be able to walk safely up and down the street to access the library. But they felt that drivers were just going just much too fast, even on this narrow, short stretch of roadway. And so the advisory lanes were to try and again carve out a, a space where people could feel a little bit more comfortable walking or biking along it. This is kind of the flagship project in the state at this point in time. Still, this is the Scarborough Eastern Road Advisory Lane Condition. So this is actually one of the connectors to the Eastern Trail down on the far end where the, where the road kind of vanishes into that little tree tunnel. There is a, a condo complex. There is a neighborhood beyond it. And you know, this was, this was in response to just the perception that people were doing fifty-five miles per hour down the straightaway. And they needed to do something to calm traffic down. So myself and Dan Bacon, who was the planner at that time, kind of cooked this idea up and this is the result of it. It was striped as an experiment like three years ago and it has been restriped ever since. Here's just a larger image of that, of that same that same roadway. Comments on it. So I, I did reach out to some of my contacts in Scarborough. Deputy Chief Grover got right back to me. He's one of our law enforcement collaborative members and he said, quote, they've not received any feedback on the advisory lane since the education campaign took place. We did do a kind of a public awareness and like ex- explanation campaign about what this facility was and how it was supposed to work. If anyone wants to follow up with Dave, he did say that he was happy to speak with anyone. So Chief Gagné, if you want to talk to Dave Grover, I'm sure he'd be happy to talk with you. Jay Chase, the director of planning in Scarborough was, you know, he heard that the initial feedback was positive and they've heard no complaints. And I think that, you know, everyone who works in municipal government can appreciate that in our world silence is gold and as most people are quiet when they're happy. So and Jay wishes you. So, and Jay wishes you good luck. Larry Rubenstein, who is a resident on that roadway, lives in the condo complex. He has been an ardent supporter of this facility since it was first installed. He has seen just huge increases in the amount of people, you know, biking, walking, jogging, pushing strollers. He likes that, you know, that the narrow center lane forces drivers to slow down and wait for traffic to pass. And so, you know, that was a condition in which I want to say that we're about at 15 feet at that one still. But, you know, there's enough friction there that people do slow down. You know, and he mentioned that is association cocktail hours. We're normally 35 to 50 people up. They're always talking about, sorry, how how many people are very supportive of the, of the lane. So, and as far as he knows, there are no complaints. Dave would have mentioned if there had been any crashes on it. So my understanding is it's been a trouble-free facility for Scarborough that people have really enjoyed. So when we talk about what kind of roads are suitable for advisory lanes, you know, basically they need to be low-volume roads, which typically is, you know, sub 5,000 average annual daily traffic, 4,000, 5,000, low speed. So, you know, certainly no higher than 35 miles per hour. Less than 32 feet wide, because at 32 feet wide, you can begin to think about using sort of a more traditional bike lane and travel lane kind of situation. Cause you can have two 11-foot travel lanes and two five-foot bike lanes. But Michael Williams, the advisory expert I mentioned here, he is, he's really a proponent of even, even when you get a little bit over 32 feet, it's good to use an advisory lane because you can increase the amount of lateral separation between a bicycle rider or in some cases a pedestrian and motor vehicle traffic. You know, the advisory lane is suitable for roads that need bicycle facilities, but are simply too narrow to use that two-lane configuration plus bike lanes and places that are in need of traffic calming. And it appears that that is the situation with Mechanic Street. This is a, this is a photograph of some measurements that Dave actually took when we went and met. And we get the cross-section total up here. And this shows the amount of center line that would be left after we took off 12 feet for two six-foot shoulders. And, you know, in this one place, it's a little bit, a little bit narrow. And I think that's actually one of the locations where we used a center line recommendation anyway. But Mechanic Street checks a lot of the boxes. I checked the DOT stats on Mechanic Street. It is, you know, the heaviest segment of the roadway only sees just a little under actually 3,800 AADT, right down near the town center, the intersection with Route 1. It is a posted low-speed roadway, varying from 25 to 30 to 35 out a little bit. It is generally less than 32 feet wide. And according to Dave and the folks in the community that I've spoken with, it feels like it needs some traffic calming. I think that Mechanic Street, you know, the issues and concerns that exist on it for me are that curve in the road between Knowlton and Willow, where Dave and the chief mentioned that there's a guy who likes to park on the road there. And at that point, I think it would be appropriate to drop the advisory lane condition and consider going to a center line with a shared lane marking. That is what the federal highway guidance is in a condition like that. Similarly, there's a kind of an elevation change a bit beyond Oak. As far as I can tell, looking at topo maps and looking at street view. But that's another spot where we, you know, you might want to think about actually dropping the advisory condition and going back to the more traditional center line, just to make sure that people kind of stay on their side of the road where they don't have good sightlines. The roadway, based on, you know, the analysis of Dave and myself and walking around and looking at pictures and measuring and so forth. It looks like it would be able to sustain two, five to six-foot advisory lanes with a center lane, you know, of a narrowest point between 11 and a wide one of about 21. And 21 is actually a little too wide. It's actually outside of even federal highway guidance. 11 is actually still within the federal highway guidance envelope. And I think in the revised drawings I submitted to the town today, there was some conversation about maybe carrying the advisory lanes down beyond Washington towards Route 1. And I think in that context, it might be a little narrower too. So, but it would work down there great, I think, because the speed is so slow. And just, especially if you did it with contrasting paint, I think it would be quite, you know, quite a striking facility and one that would, I think, calm traffic. As I've mentioned, it would need some adaptations at that curve. And as I mentioned, federal highway recommends that you drop the advisory condition and go to that center line for curves and hills. Looking at it and just kind of like looking at some of the site distance requirements. You know, I think that if you were to stripe a center line of about, you know, 500-plus feet around that curve and then maybe 600 feet, you know, over the apex of the hill. So maybe 300 on each side. I think you would give drivers enough notification that they needed to stay right at those places where sightlines weren't good. I should say that, you know, the, there are a couple hoops that you'll need to go through. Because this is a fully local road, you actually don't need DOT approval. But the, you know, the MUTCD and the federal highway are requesting that, you know, folks who are using advisory lanes should apply for formal permission to experiment. But all of the installations that I've done in Maine have not gone through that hoop. And so, you know, there is, there's just a, I think, a little bit of a kind of, you know, let's keep it on the down-low and see how it goes kind of attitude. And so even that, that high-profile facility in Scarborough is, you know, they did not formally request permission to experiment. It's not a hugely onerous process and I've got the paperwork. So if you want to go down that route, we can certainly assist with that. It is important that you include signage on the facility. And the signage, you know, needs to include the, the big yellow diamond-shaped signs that have the two-way arrows. And I do recommend that you use the advisory guidance sign. Because these are intended more as bike lanes than as multi-use lanes. You should, I think, consider, you know, perhaps a bike lane sign wherever the condition picks up. And you can, you can use bike lane stencils in the edge lines. I've actually noted here, shared lane markings, which are a little bit different from a classic bike lane stencil. Those are the things you see in the middle of the road. We have like two chevrons in the image of a bicycle. But because the edge lane is technically, you know, it's a shareable lane. You know, you expect the cars are going to have to go into it sometimes. It's not a fully preferential lane, like a bike lane is demarcated typically with a solid line, which indicates it's a non-permeable condition. The dash line shows that it is permeable. And so I thought Michael Williams' argument to use shared lane markings there made sense. The research shows that there's no, there's no meaningful difference between how drivers react to which stencil you use. These are just a couple of images that show, you know, kind of how it would work. You know, so with a narrow, a narrow center lane, you see the truck is in the middle and the bikes are going along and everything's fine. In a situation where you have a slightly wider travel lane, center lane, I mean, it could be the same thing. You could have really put any of these images in any of these boxes. But you can see in C here that the, the truck is now encroaching into the edge lane. And with, with an 18-foot travel lane, you can, you can get cars to squeeze by each other. They will slow down to do it. Typically, a car is no wider than seven and a half feet. And, you know, 18 feet just feels enough like threading the needle that most drivers will slow down to pass each other. But there is no encroachment necessary into the center lane. That concludes the slide deck. And so I'm more than happy to take any questions you might have about the facility.
I have a question, Bob.
Who's, who's, who's Taylor? Heard your voice, Taylor, go ahead.
That presentation was very good, thank you. I think that conceptually, it's a great idea. And I know that improving pedestrian and bike access all over town is something that I think we all hear about consistently. Just a question that pops in my mind, I think particularly for Mechanic Street and some of those wider areas where it continues from Willow out to Oak. Street parking tends to be fairly popular, I think, because there's enough room to park on both sides of the street and still get traffic through. So you do see that frequently. I'm curious, what generally happens when you put the advisory lanes in on both sides of the street? Does that eliminate street parking or do they coexist somehow?
Yeah, we'd have to look at that, the geometry of that a little bit more. I mean, I, we did raise that question. You know, on our site visit, I didn't get the impression that there was a lot of on-street parking kind of beyond, you know, free street even. I mean, at that point, the, the, the paint, the painted parking spots no longer are present. What, what you could do is, you know, drop a parking stripe. And you can get away with a seven-foot parking stripe. And then you could actually have your advisory lanes in board of that. But you'd want to make sure that they were wide enough that you're giving people, you know, adequate room to get away from car doors opening and closing. And I don't know if you guys have seen the conceptual drawings and I can, I can bring those up if you want. Down in town where there is parking, David suggested that what we should do is actually create, you know, an advisory lane that's a good six feet wide and actually paint it green so that it really kind of clarifies that there's a conflict zone there. So it can work. It might be suboptimal as, you know, parking often makes bicycling conditions. But, you know, we'd have to study it a little further, but I think it's possible to make it work.
Allison?
Um, yeah, I'm overjoyed by this. I've been enthusiastically watching your presentations since my first Build Maine conference last year and following on Facebook. And this is something I think a lot of people in Camden care deeply about. Something Pathways Committee has been just shipping and hammering away at really well for a long time. But it's like the town just hasn't been able to make as much progress as I think the general, you know, the majority of residents would like us to make. And so having you guys come in with expertise and propose things is exactly what we need. I live on that street. I'm probably one of the heaviest street parkers. One of the reasons that I'm a huge advocate for street parking is because I believe it slows people down. It also, I'd be nervous about discouraging it too much because they also think it's an important part of other town goals that we have in terms of, you know, urban infill and housing density and not just bulldozing all the houses and making parking lots. So I think Taylor has a reasonable, you know, concern with that. But it would be good to see a little bit more detailed proposal or even just to reach out maybe with a little bit more community input. I'm, my questions, I guess, would be how has the community education portion gone? And how have you, have you done that?
Hasn't even started yet.
No, I mean, in, in other places, not Camden.
Oh, so, you know, it varies from community to community. Both Yarmouth and Scarborough had pretty robust processes where there were public meetings about them. There were mailers sent out by the town. In, in Scarborough, I know that they, they sent mailers out to all the butters. They might have sent it out townwide and, you know, it might have just been, it certainly, certainly was on the town listserv. But I think that they did do some physical mailings, perhaps just to the people on the street. And then they also had signs that were put up along the facility that, you know, explained what it was and how it was supposed to work. And I will say, you know, I, you know, you're right. Parking on-street can create a kind of visual friction that can help slow traffic. You know, I probably have to go up there and, and look at the cross-section a little bit more to see like what the options are. I mean, you know, the ambitious option would be, you know, a parking buffered advisory lane. I don't know if that's ever been done. But there are instances for certain, and there's a number of images in the guidance that show advisory lanes being used alongside of parking. And again, my biggest concern whenever you put a bike lane next to parking is that you're making sure the bike lane is adequately wide that if someone flings a door open, you're not, you know, hitting a, hitting a rider or creating another hazard. We'd have to look at that a little bit more closely. But I think they could coexist. And, you know, I think, you know, on-street parking is, is a good way to go because, you know, all towns have more parking capacity than people think they do. I don't disagree.
I think, is it Mr. Ratner had his finger up?
Yes. In most cases like this where I'm not knowledgeable about the circumstances, though I'm a big bike rider, I, I'm always curious about the experts and that would be our police chief and our director of public works. I like to see what they have to say about this.
Yeah, we will get, get there and say, Randy, you want to wait till the end or do you want to comment now? You're muted, Randy. Muted.
Thought I was talking to myself. You know, whatever's convenient. I've got the speed survey that we did, so I can give you some numbers of volume of vehicles and average speeds and whatnot. You know, I looked at the project with Jim and Dave and Audra. I think Mechanic Street is a great place to try this. Yeah, there are the concerns about the on-street parking. But looking at the designs Jim's put in there, I think there's probably ways to work around that and maybe have the best of both worlds. I don't see anything safety-wise that really got me worried. As far as speeds on Mechanic Street, we conducted a speed survey right around 72 Mechanic. And that speed survey went from June 18th till the 25th. In that time period, we monitored 15,423 vehicles. And the 85th percentile, which the state uses to look at speeds in areas, were traveling at 36 miles per hour. Volume was, I think, 2,721 was the top day. That was June 19th. And it went down from there. 1598 was the combined total on June 21st. So there is some, we didn't see any great speeds. I had one that was in the 61 to 65 mile an hour. Actually, there was two in the 61 to 65. One that was in the 56 to 60, 1051 to 55, 46 to 50, there were 67. 41 to 45 were 519. 36 to 40 was 3,170. And 31 to 35 was 6,553 for the vehicle speeds in totals. And 26 to 30 miles per hour with 3,750. 21 to 25 was 874. And 16 to 20 miles per hour were 240.
That was me every time.
Yeah, yeah. I can, I have these available. I've sent them to Audra. I can get them out to anybody who'd like to see them.
Thanks, Randy.
That is, sorry to interrupt, but that's, sorry, that's really validating. I had, because that's the 30 mile per hour zone. And it shouldn't be, I strongly believe we should be looking at reducing the speed limit also. The 35 mile an hour starts right at my house. And people see that from, I believe, from down the hill. And they speed up to, they think, oh, now it's okay to go 40. And I think getting back to what Jim started with, was this idea that we need to teach people that the speed limit is the speed limit. I don't know that even going 30 miles an hour, 35 miles an hour there is appropriate.
All right. Any other comments from the gang? Mr. Scott, you've been so quiet.
He's muted.
I'll give my time to Jim because I think he wanted to respond to Allison and then I'll start after Jim.
Very, very quickly, I'd want to say thanks, chief, for that information. And if you could email me that information that I can put in the Camden folder, that would be great. The volume information for speed was great. I'm kind of curious to see what the biggest cohort was. I just wanted to throw a little caution out there about trying to lower the speed limit because DOT manages all the speed limits. And if you ask for a speed study and the chief has told you that the 85th percentile is 36 miles per hour. You know, the problem with the methodology that the DOT uses is that it tends to put upward pressure on speed limits. And so the faster people, you know, the, if the speed limit's 35 and they're And so the faster people, you know, the hot, if, if the speed limit's 35 and they're doing 40, the next time they do a speed study, the speed limit tends to jump up to 40. So, um, what, the, the idea might be to make some geometric changes to the roadway and the way that we're describing. See if it has an effect, you know, and you, and the chief can measure that for you and then request your speed study. So see if you can make some.
Stepwise process. You're exactly right, Jim.
That has actually happened in Camden before.
It has.
Where, uh, we residents demanded a speed study, the state come in and they actually raised the speed limit. And I think that's happened twice. So that's why we bought the equipment to do our own speed studies. We bought it with Rockport. And, uh, I like to do that so we can get some numbers before we, we potentially get the speed limit increased.
Yeah, once, one second, Mark. I want to get, uh, Jeff wanted to say some things next. Jeff was up.
Thank you. Um, and I, I would echo what Jim said is that, uh, the whole concept behind this is, uh, Allison is the, the whole calming, the traffic calming thing. So hopefully it'll, it'll, it'll work. That's the idea. And I want to remind everybody that this is a demonstration project. So this is something that we're all learning from. And, um, I'm over the moon that, uh, that we're, that we're talking about this. It's just fantastic. And I want to send out a big thank you to Jim Tassie and BCM for their support. It's, and Dave and, oh my gosh, I, uh, I'm so excited. I, I, yeah, a lot of energy. And I want to say that, um, although I'm over the moon, the Pathways Committee hasn't had a chance to meet to talk about this. Just funny times, but, uh, uh, saying that, I think Dave knows and Audra that we have pushed forward, safety and bike awareness, uh, information over the last couple of years that is on target for Mechanic Street. Mechanic Street was one of the top three that needed bike, bike safety. So that jives really, really well, too. And I, I just, let's see, one more thing. I'm over the moon about this. And I want to say, let's, let's be ambitious. Let's do this. It doesn't have to be, this is nothing permanent. As Audra started out, this is five years, and I did have a couple of questions sort of related. Jim, do, do we ever use like paint that's like less durable? Um, so we can test this for a year. Um, that would be one question. So that's sort of a demo project that way. And let's see, um, related to something in my mind, and I just thought I'd air it here. In your rough proposal, Jim, you talk about, uh, moving from one setup of, uh, an advisory lane and then going to a center line and then going back to advisory lane and then going back to center line. Is that confusing? Have, do you have any experience with that? Any data on that? Or is it more like, uh, people just get used to it because it's like having a white dotted line and then a solid double yellow? And, you know, we changing things all the time on roads that you're adapting to. But I, it's something that jumped up in my mind because it's a new idea. And then all, at the end of the day, I have to say, you know what? It's a demo project, so let's try it and, and see what's going on. And then finally, I'll say this, that amongst all of you, I think I ride the most. Um, and whenever, I ride almost every day. And, uh, whenever a cyclist sees any kind of facility for them, it's better. We are facing car doors opening all the time with nothing there to protect us. There are narrow lanes, cars parked on both sides, the doors are opening. We're dealing with this all the time. Anything that creates a greater awareness, the person getting in the car sees the paint on the lines, the paint underneath them getting in and goes, oh yeah, there's bikes here. I should look around. That's like, oh my gosh, it's better. So, um, so anything is better. And again, we can, we can gather data and, and see what the community says. That's the whole idea. Thank you.
Well, so in response to, you know, the question, um, you know, regarding the, the kind of variation of, uh, the facility, it, you know, it, it's suboptimal. Um, you know, I, I much prefer a continuous facility that would look the same all, the whole way through the road. And I know that Angela feels quite strongly about that too, because she let me know. And I can't say she's wrong, um, but, you know, fed, the federal highway guidance specifically, um, recommends that you drop and use, uh, a center line condition whenever the sightlines are compromised. And so I think it's a bit out of an abundance of caution. You know, a, as a demonstration project, we really want to make sure people respond positively, you know? So, you know, you don't want to give people the thing to, to kind of grab onto that says, this is the real problem and hammer that. So, you know, the fact that, um, we can actually revert to a more kind of familiar condition in a couple of places on the corridor, I think might give people a little bit more comfort with it. And, uh, you know, and, and then, you know, down the road, perhaps, um, you know, you are able to actually carry the condition all the way through the curve. Uh, because people are going to know, you know, what it is and, and, and how to operate on it. The sightline on the hill, um, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to see how that kind of shakes out and works. But, um, I, I think it's good to operate out of an abundance of caution. Uh, you know, this facility would not be, it would not have made it as far as it had if it were unsafe. You know, federal highway is not a particularly, um, you know, out there on the edge, uh, outfit. So they, they make sure they've got good data before they actually start proposing, um, facilities. So I think you can use, um, some confidence here. I think that the, uh, the volume data that the, uh, the chief was referencing is, you know, that's actually a little lower than what the DOT data has. Cause I think, I think you're, you're like sub, you know, 2,000 a day on a few days, right, Chief? And, and I think that that's, uh, that's, you know, that's the average annual daily traffic, which does include like your peak seasons when you've got like a zillion tourists there. It kind of smooshes it all out, but, um, you know, it, it, it sounds like it's a, it's a good candidate.
And the latex, the, the idea of paint, have you ever worked with?
Well, the paint that I use is typically, um, very temporary. Um, I use, uh, when I'm actually painting it, I'll use like, uh, just a, a spray can marking paint for parking lots. And that typically isn't applied at a heavy enough volume to be super sticky. The paint contractor that you would use to do this, um, and I would recommend on something this long that you actually, you know, use, you know, your striping contractor. You, you, you would talk to them a little bit about it and, and Mike, you know, it, it, it's one winter with sand and plow trucks is going to go a long way to erasing any marking you put on. As we know from every other marking on every other roadway.
Mark, one more time, go ahead.
Uh, really quickly, I think it's a great idea. I think trying this will slow down the traffic, which is sort of what we want. It'll calm the traffic. So we would need a traffic study. I think Randy's information, we'll, we'll see that slow down a little bit. Lastly, I'd just like to ask Dave if he has any problems with it, how he feels about it and like to, you know, make a recommendation that we do this.
Yeah, um, let me, uh, let me ask a question of Jim before we jump over Dave's comments and just to round out the questions. Your criterion for suggested, by the way, the heck is that? To go to inform ring in here, uh, the suggestions for, um, criterion for a, a advisory lane. One of the ones I'm used to seeing is line of sight. Uh, line of sight is absolutely key to a successful, every one of the pictures you showed have clear line of sight. And I'm not suggesting that it can't work because I know in France and Germany, they've done it big time. But that was a big, um, they've gone to different models because of that situation. You mentioned in this, in your presentation, your concerns about the two bumps in the road, as it were, the two hills. Where else in, in Maine or in New England has a segmented advisory lane demonstration project actually occurred?
I, I don't know. Um, none, none of the ones that I've done have, have done that. As I said, you know, this is the federal highway recommendation, to deal with it so that they, they, they suggest that you go back to that, that center lane condition. The site, the site distances that federal highway recommends that you, uh, work with are, you know, site, uh, what is it? Passing site distances, which are, um, um, a, a little bit, a little bit big.
300 feet.
Oh, more than that in some cases, at 35 miles per hour, the, uh, the passing site distance is 550 feet. So it's, yeah, and, and you can nuance that a little bit. I mean, I was riding on a road in Scarborough, uh, no, I'm sorry, Cape Elizabeth, uh, just, um, last week and, and, um, it was an unmarked road, but they did, they did, it struck me and, and I almost took a picture of it because it was a completely unmarked road with no center line, except when it ran around the turn, they dropped a center line on it just to kind of like clarify like, hey, you should be keeping to your lane. Um, and, you know, they certainly did not do 550 feet of center line. So I think that that's going to be kind of an engineering judgment call a little bit on the part of, you know, Dave and the striping contractor. But, um, yeah, I, I will, I will say all the, um, all the advisory lanes that we're starting to like, uh, design now and like the ones we're doing Yarmouth, where at every intersection, we're actually recommending that we do about 20 to 50 feet of, um, center line so that it really clarifies to the drivers that this is a two-lane condition. And, um, so, you know, I, I'm, I'm kind of making that my default. So there, if, if you look at the plan that I've got at, at a couple of the intersections, we do revert to a double, uh, yellow condition simply to kind of like clarify that, you know, when the, when the new drivers are getting onto the segment of road, this is a two-lane road, you've got to keep right, you've got to be watching for oncoming traffic. So, uh, the, the design guidance that I've seen is kind of trending that way. They, they want to emphasize that it's a two-lane road.
Great presentation, great answers. Uh, Dave, I want to give you an opportunity to close out before you make a recommendation for the schedule going forward.
I was very excited about this and I really was enthusiastic about doing this. And like a lot of things, you, you get excited about it and then you look at it again and you look at it with some concern because of safety reasons. So I've been, I've been looking at the road a little more carefully. Um, I think this is all a great idea, but I wanted to just show a slide of things that I'm kind of a little concerned with and things I'd like to kind of, you know, make sure we iron out before we just go and put lines down. So if you, if I have permission, I'd like to just kind of show a quick.
You should have permission.
Okay, so what, what I did here was I went back and I, you saw the little drawing that I did when I first tried to, um, determine the width of the road and I went and verified the widths. Nothing's really changed, but as, as, as you can see right here on the very end over here by John Street, that section hadn't been done and it's very narrow right there. Still within, you know, the tolerance level, but, um, I have four kind of concerns and I really would make sure that we have thoroughly exhausted all we can to make sure this is safe for everybody. The first one is the parking situation and Jim's talked about that and we kind of have a workaround possibly with that. The second is the curve. This location right here, which has some concerns, and that was where we talked about probably doing the double yellow. But the more I looked at this hill area right here, um, when you're in this, I mean, you don't, when you're right here, you don't see the car coming until it's about the top of the hill right here and they can't see you. So that, that has, you know, that has potential to have some, be problematic there also. And of course, this area right in through here is very narrow. And when people come whipping in through and they yield off onto Mechanic, they're usually going pretty fast. So, you know, those are things I think that we need to maybe have a group sit down before we, you know, kind of really do anything and talk about, um, some of the treatments that we could do at each one of those locations. And possibly maybe get, you know, a little bit more multi-disciplined people out there to help us with that. That would be just potentially the safest thing, I think, to do. Because I, I really want this to work and I don't, I don't want to do it wrong. Because this is the first one we're really doing. I think if we do it wrong, it'll put a bad taste in everyone's mouth and it'll, you know, curtail any moving forward with this. So that's just my input on it. How do I leave the shared screen?
Don't, don't leave it yet.
Oh, oh, okay.
Well, I, I don't know. What I was going to say is on the narrow section that you identified, I actually had, um, in, in the, uh, the, the, the drawings that I'd sent, uh, proposed that the, the, you know, the advisory lanes not be used there. That was the condition. That was the, uh, because I thought that was narrow too. I was able to measure that. And so that was a, a situation where I thought we might want to use a center line with shared lane markings. On the hill, I mean, I agree with you. I'd like to look at that more and think about that more. My thought was that again, that you, you drop a stripe that would go, uh, from the apex of the hill, from the top of the hill on both sides. So the people would, you know, realize that they were just, you know, needing to keep right on those contexts. And then, uh, we've talked about the curve and, and the parking, you know, the cool thing about doing this down in this area is that, um, I think it's really going to calm traffic down. I think that, you know, you, you know, down in this parking area, I'm almost most excited to experiment with it down here because I think you're going to have the opportunity to see how much it just slows everything down.
Right, right.
But, um, I agree with everything you said and, uh, I, I just wanted to, you know, chime in that, you know, the narrow section did concern me as well. And I thought that that was a place where we should just use, uh.
Thank you, Jim. Dave, want to go back to, um, uh, uh, thank you very much. Uh, this is all based on, by the way, that, I think, uh, everybody, um, Jim, you can tell we're all excited about it. It's a great idea. We need to, we need to do something in Camden. We know there are concerns. We know we don't have all the answers right this moment. So what I would like to suggest, um, Audra, if you, uh, agree that with the, uh, in a few individuals like Dave, Jim, Jeff, probably somebody from MDOT do a little bit more homework together. And by the way, I'm not limiting it to that. You, you, you're smart enough to know who to bring in better than me. But to admonish you all to get out there and kick the tires literally and come back with a, with a solid recommendation for the select board. That make sense? Dave?
I mean, I think we could do it pretty quickly.
I was going to suggest, can we do that? So we can, we can authorize it the next select board meeting if it's, if.
ASAP for sure. Um, Mechanic Street's still being worked on, but I, I would, I'd prefer that, Mark. But I want Dave and Jim and company to do, you know, a solid job here with, they're not all, they all have other things to do too. But, uh, Dave, you, you have to be the chairman of that group, so. Just kidding. But, um, I, I think that that would be the smartest thing to do because your, your minds are great, even one of you. And like I said, add whomever you want, a gang, um, to the, to the task force. But yeah, uh, to Mark's point, we don't want to wait too long to make this decision. You know, we're, we're hot on the trails of finishing. Mechanic Street, it hasn't completely paved yet. It will be soon, but we should have a plan in place as we get to that point. Allison?
And I guess, uh, this is maybe just a rhetorical thing in terms of making a decision. I would prefer not to leave it in the air like, oh, well, maybe there's, the plan's going to come back and the select board's going to say, no. Um, I mean, I'm, I think anything is better than the current situation, even these areas where it's narrow. There are already people riding their bikes. I, I'm comfortable with whatever Dave and Jeff and Jim and, you know, whatever collectively, whoever the group is that Dave decides to involve or Audra, whoever's in charge, um, I'm, I will be in favor of that. So, and I would, I guess I'd kind of ask that anybody who isn't in favor, who's just like thinking about voting no or is really concerned would say so now rather than.
I think, I, I think it's appropriate for, um, them to come back and if, if nothing else is for the, the public edification. Because I think it's important to get the public knowledgeable on what we're proposing to do and solicit feedback that way. So if there's another way to do the public feedback besides a select board meeting, fine. But I, I don't feel comfortable giving a blank check. There's too many, too many safety concerns here.
I'm not saying a blank check. I'm just saying, are we, are we all feeling like we're going to do something, whatever? You know, something like this.
I very much support this, but I agree with Bob.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in the same boat. You know, absolutely, absolutely. But, um, I would feel more comfortable seeing a, a concrete plan forward and voting yes on that when it comes to us.
Hey, well, let's, if we at least agree to get this group, you know, on, on the ground, Jim's walked aside and Dave has and Jeff has and wherever else you add to the team, be great. I'm sure you'll, whatever you, I'm sure it's going to be great. I'm not worried about Allison, Audra.
Just one, uh, just one sort of point of clarification because I, I do think that we can have something ready for. Just one, uh, just one sort of point of clarification, because I, I do think that we can have something ready for the next meeting. So theoretically say that we, we get something ready. Everybody's, you know, pretty confident to bring it to the select board. Are you all comfortable with maybe us releasing it publicly and getting a little feedback? Or at least getting it circulating enough so that you have public comment in time for that next meeting? So you have that input to kind of finalize everything?
I, I think that's key. I think we want to get information to the public because due to, uh, I think it was Allison's question or somebody's question to Jim about the PR and public information, the more we do with that, the better off we all are. Uh, because we'd love to get feedback on something like that. And if that should for some reason hold up the fourth, that, that, that's, that's a priority to me, at least to me. Other select board members can chime in what they want to do, but, uh, what we should do, but I think that's very important.
So Will.
I like that.
Oh, sorry, Taylor.
I was just going to say that I agree with that.
Yeah.
Thanks, yes.
Good. So let's, let's proceed with that and I'll let the, um, the fearsome, foursome, the fivesome figure out who the team is and yeah, ASAP. It, it, the message is we're anxious, we want it done. We don't want to do it without, you know, any consideration and we certainly don't want to do without public input.
I guess maybe I need to take another trip to Camden. Oh.
Well, you're welcome.
I like going to Camden, so.
Please come. Thanks to Jim. It was a great presentation. Thank you for the time very, very much. And we lost Angela, but thank her for us also. What else?
Angela's still there.
Oh, there she is. Did you want to say anything? You spent all this time with us. Do you want to say anything, Angela? You're muted. You're muted, Angela.
No, I just want to, uh, say, yeah, no, it's always, um, inspiring to see groups like yours looking to make things better. So we'll definitely take a look at this again and, and be back.
Sounds perfect. Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Bob, is it possible to ask Jim just to send that, um, slide deck through by email so we have access to it?
I already, I've already done that actually.
And you can download it.
Yeah, Audra, Audra and Jeff and Dave all got a PDF of it. I'm happy to send it again. I, I can send it as a slide deck. I sent it as just a PDF handout kind of thing, but.
Yeah, maybe it's, maybe it's, that's fine. That works great.
Okay.
That would be great. Thank you, Jim.
Jim, this is, I, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but before we lose Jim, Jim, you mentioned to me, unrelated to this, uh, a program with, uh, double A R P about age accessible or something like that. And can you just?
Age friendly community. So, um, uh, A R P has a kind of, um, network of stakeholders around the state and actually Maine has more, more age friendly communities than any other state in the country. And what these are, it's like, it's just groups of people who are interested in making sure that their communities, you know, work for people of all ages. You know, I focus on kind of the transportation sort of elements of that and particularly people being able to walk and bike. But, um, Angela is, uh, really coordinating our, uh, our, our partnership with, um, the A R P groups. And so she can provide you a little bit more information about the process. It's, it's not a hard process to get started. It, um, you know, you have to commit to creating a plan within two years and we can help with that. But the beauty of it is, is that once you're part of the age friendly network for the A R P, you get access to A R P support. And, um, as Maine is, you know, one of the oldest states in the country, only Florida, uh, is, is competing with Maine for the, um, percentage of, uh, people over fifty. You know, there is, uh, there is, uh, uh, you know, a, a, a substantial amount of resources that they can bring to bear on some of these projects. And so, uh, the work that we do, um, including this job is, is partly driven by, um, you know, our involvement with A R P and, and the funding that they provide us with. And I'll also mention, although we're talking a lot about, um, bikes today, the B C M and the Maine D O T are committed to working with Camden on pedestrian issues as well. Dave and Audra and the chief and I had a great conversation about, uh, a couple of vexing intersections in town. And, um, you know, please don't, uh, let this be the last conversation we have about improving conditions for vulnerable users in Camden. You know, we need to finish the site visit and the complete heads up process so we can get a, um, the report sent to you guys. And then, um, we can start experimenting with other treatments for pedestrian safety as well.
Thank you, Jim. We know your face. We won't let you get away.
Very good. Thanks a lot. It was great talking to y'all. Have a good night and, uh, Dave.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angela.
Good night.
Back to our agenda now and back to, um, item now six, which is discussion of the, uh, fees, license fees of the wind jammers and day sailors during this.
Bob?
Yeah.
You neglected to do select board reports?
Uh, we'll do it at the end. We'll do it at the end. These, what? Fees for wind jammers and day sales during COVID nineteen, there are two letters in our packet regarding, their requests for, uh, reduction of fees. So I throw it open to any comments in the select board.
Uh, question.
Taylor.
I remember we discussed this, um, I think when we were going through the budget, but I don't remember off the top of my head. What did we end up putting in the budget when we were anticipating this conversation coming up? I think we may have made some changes.
Audra, do you? I have it here. But I, I don't think we reduced anything.
No, I think what we said, sorry, I'm starting to, we said that, um, what, uh, what I committed to anyway was coming back to all of you and getting a decision about it.
Right. I don't think we reduced anything in the budget.
Actually, sorry, we did, we did project, um, lower revenue in the budget, just in case, just to give some leeway that if a decision were made to reduce fees, expecting it wouldn't be a revenue shortfall.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah. Do you want me to give you exact numbers of what we?
Yeah, I'm just curious if, because I, I feel like we had talked about a fifty percent reduction. I don't remember if that was just theoretical or if we had actually projected that in the budget. If we make a decision tonight to do that and we've already projected that in the budget, that may make the conversation easier.
Right.
Yeah, I'll tell you the exact amount, just a moment.
Okay, I've got it here and I can't find it.
All right, so what, what we were projecting was about, um, six thousand less than we normally receive or normally collect from the day sailors. And about six thousand less than we normally collect from the wind jammers as well.
And those are, I was going to say there's, their normal license fees for day sales is twenty-five hundred dollars times seven. So that's about thirty thousand dollars. We probably reduced that six. And as I recall, the wind jammers are about over three thousand each and there are six of those. So it's about twenty some thousand dollars. So it's a similar order of magnitude differential.
Audra, what was, what, what did we do to get those figures down? What, what, what was our discount?
Well, I mean, at that stage, it was just sort of a best guess.
Okay, um, because I, I've been thinking about it. I've had a, uh, suggestion, Bob and I discussed it and I thought about it. You know, especially the wind jammers are not out there. They're not conducting business this year. They're using the facilities of the town, much like people that use, you know, floats or anchors in the town. And I think we should actually lower the cost of their anchorage to what regular people pay for anchoring a boat out there this year. And I think that's, that's a fair proposal in, in a very difficult year, in an important situation, for preserving, uh, their financial stability.
I just square foot it, but you mean by linear foot on a, like a tenth of town float.
No, what, Bob, Bob knows, I think Bob knows, what's the, what are the?
The discussion went around, you know, one of my discussion was around the following. I think, uh, we all know that day sales and wind jammers, it was getting, they're getting hit, they're getting hit hard and we need to do something. The, the discussion was about whether or not, by the way, also I believe each of them is, has a little different financial situation. Some have, have, uh, I believe have PPP, some don't. Their financial, my bottom line is their financial situation is, is very varied. And I, I thought that maybe we should just approach them and say, look, um, we're not, we're not going to collect uh, full fees, but we, we start getting into what's a fair number for all six wind jammers and seven day sailors is very difficult. You know, is it fifty percent? We can do that. Is it ten percent? We can do that. Or just, I, I would start the conversation with Mark, as I said, and why don't we just, uh, try to be partners with these people and say, look, we, we, we don't know what your individual situations are. We have to have a, a partnership with you all and, uh, contribute what you think you can, given your business model this year. That, that's how that conversation evolved. And then we, then we discussed, yes, there are fees, other fees we charge people who have, um, you know, floats, you know, they, they pay a certain amount of moorings, they pay a certain amount. So that's where Mark was coming to. And I think the, I think the harbor floats are around seven fifty, a, a boat, for the season, um, that kind of number, et cetera, et cetera. So that, that's, I wanted to clarify, that's where that conversation came from.
And I thought, uh, in talking about floats and moorings, I thought, you know, that's basically, you know, allowing them to use the harbor, but basically in the same rules that other people with boats are using right now.
So, um, yeah, I'm just not convinced it would work out to be cheaper. Because you come in with a boat of that size and you want to tie up at a town dock, it's going to cost you a ton of money. So, um, I, yeah, I just, using that formula, I'm not sure if it would work. I do think at least one of the wind jammers is where, is doing stuff. I would support a reduction in fees and tend to do the cop out thing a little bit, which is to look for staff recommendation. But Audra mentioned something in passing and maybe it was another issue that made a, a lot of sense to me in comparing a little bit to the type of, I guess, behavior that we are hoping for the town would be hoping for from, um, like downtown landlords. And so some of them are, um, you know, not everybody is in a position to be able to give any kind of a discount, but a lot of the time it's a question of an empty storefront or, um, giving a, a reduction in rent at this time. And I think some, you know, some landlords have really gone above and beyond. And I think that the, the community would probably expect that of the town of Camden, that we would, you know, give some kind of a, a reduction that would be comparable to maybe what we did, I think at the end with this, um, side country. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of landlords are doing, um, half off. So I don't know, I'd be, I think Audra has a good way of thinking about this and I kind of.
Yeah. Did you have a recommendation?
Well, I would, I would say that definitely, you know, we, we need to reduce what we normally charge them and recognize the fact that, you know, they're struggling. You know, I don't, I can't, besides the lodging industry here in town, I can't think of an industry that's been harder hit by this than the wind jammers. The day sailors, some of them have been able to salvage a little bit of a season. It's not nearly as good as it usually is for them. They're struggling too, but the wind jammers, I really, I really worry about them this season and it's iconic to Camden. And if we can, if the smallest thing that we can do is help with, um, taking away that financial burden, I think that that's, you know, that's something that, um, being a good landlord, we should consider doing. Um, so I, I would recommend that we, we look at that. One of the things that I think that we also need to, you know, advocate for on a, on a state level is, you know, municipalities have a lot of revenue that we're, we're looking at losing from, um, non-tax based sources. And I'm hoping we're going to get some relief in that regard. And this would be certainly one of those things that I think we'd want to advocate for, you know, getting some relief if CARES Act funding or, you know, any part of money is going to be passed through from the federal government to municipalities. So I just want to kind of put that out there as that might be something that we could get some relief from. Um, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but a lot of people are advocating for this sort of thing. But I think, you know, aside from that, just being a good responsible landlord and recognizing that there are businesses that are hurting. And if we can do our part to make it better for them, we should certainly consider that.
Bob, I have a motion.
Right, Taylor.
So yeah, I agree. You know, I think that, that Allison's analogy of Audra that she used, that, you know, being good landlords makes a lot of sense because people are doing, I think, it's accurate. People are doing whatever they can to pay it forward and to help out their neighbors. And, um, it would be good for us to take that step forward as well. I, so I, I, uh, just in the, for the sake of of easiness tonight, so we can do something tonight, because I'm not, I'm trying to figure out the math for the linear foot and how that would work if we were to do it, um, by dockage. I, I feel like it would just be simpler to look at the license fees. So with that, um, I move that we reduce the, uh, day sailor and wind jammer license fees by fifty percent.
Second.
Okay, so, um, discussion, Allison.
I guess one thing that I also took from the, uh, letters that we received is there, there wasn't a specific ask for an amount. And some of the, uh, different day sailors and wind jammers are in different positions. So that, some of them said they want, you know, they wanted the budget to balance out and they didn't, we, you know, we don't know how things are going to land. They don't know how things are going to land. I would prefer to conceptually support, um, a reduction in fees, but not sure that at this time I would want to say it's exactly the same for everybody. It, it may make sense that, that they actually, we actually come up with a form and they fill something out and, you know, and request, as, you know, assistance or reduction in fees. I think some of them have actually even, um, as part of their loans that they got may actually need to pay the fees. I don't know if Audra, you can have a, a model. I, I do want to take action tonight, but I also want to get it right and maybe some need to have their fees eliminated. And that would be the right thing to do because of X, Y, or Z, but maybe some are, you know, can, can go with fifty percent.
One of the ways we can handle that, and I agree with you, Allison, what you have said, I think that we're, uh, we, we can specify. Also important is when they need to pay this, because we can, between now and, you know, I don't think they need to pay this tomorrow. They can pay at the end of season, you know, they haven't paid, they, I think originally do April first.
That's true.
Is there licenses, we could make it, uh, tentative, um, Taylor's motion could be making a tentative reduction and wait and see what it is, but they won't be making any payment till September first or October first. Um, and let's, because I agree, I, that's why I came to the idea of, let's try to partner with them to discuss what they can do and they can't do. They're all, I believe there are many of them in a different financial situation. But we, we want to take a step forward and this could be just the first step. To say we were, we, we want to implement a, a no more than fifty percent, um, a payment, uh, uh, until, you know, they, and the payment would be due to October first.
Well, that actually makes, that actually makes sense to me now thinking about it, like what Allison and Bobby are both saying. If, I kind of like the idea if, if truly we're hearing from folks that some can afford to pay more than others. Um, and we don't necessarily need to see the fees until, you know, months from now. Maybe we don't take action tonight in the sense of deciding on a number and we just simply say, maybe there is a simple form. They send it, each individual business sends us a request for, this is what we expect our season to look like. And I request a reduction of fees by X amount of percent or dollars, or don't request a reduction of fees. And then we can take action on that. Some version of that does make sense to me. So I'd withdraw my motion if that feels good to everybody.
Okay, I, uh, I'd like to comment. I disagree. I don't think we should base the fee on what each individual person thinks that they can afford, because I don't think we should get into their business. That's asking them how their business is doing. I think fifty percent is too high under the conditions. I would go for reducing it by, I mean, too low. I would go for reducing it seventy-five percent. And, you know, it's, their business is their business. I don't think we should start asking, well, can you afford to pay it? I don't think we should start asking, well, can you afford to pay it or can't you? Can't do that with individual people. I don't think we should do it with the businesses either.
Clearly we're talking about helping and we can talk about this. Wind jammers and day sailors understand that we're going to work with them. And I think with, as a minimum, we could postpone any payment until October 1st and revisit with them at a later date as to whether it should be 50, 75% or they pay zero. You know, I, I, I don't, don't, I, I just don't feel good that any number can work across the board. I think, I think you're, we could kill somebody at 50%. We could kill somebody at 75%. And we don't, we had a discussion with the day sailors and the wind jammers when we did the licenses. They were concerned that we might be, the wording of the license was we were going to raise the fees too rapidly on them. And I said, we, we have to have a partnership. To me, this is part of a partnership.
I want to make sure everybody understands my, my proposal was that to reduce it by 75%, leave it at 25% fee, not the other way around.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
No, you were clear. I think it's clear, but I think the best thing we can do now say, yes, we are absolutely intend to work with them on a reduction of license fees. If there's a minimum at this point, there's no payment due until October 1st and we can work together to see what makes sense for the, 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 the group.
And I, I would say there is no, there is no urgency to collect a fee anytime soon. So I think, you know, giving everyone a little more time to see how the summer goes, see, you know, what the position is, you know, come the fall or later in the season, you know, in regard, because I, you know, I understand that, you know, you've, you've had some sort of pushback, you know, on a budget committee level about, you know, revenues and fee for service stuff. And there's been, you know, comments about that from the harbor committee as well. And I think that, you know, if we, if we wait, if we, you know, tell them that they have, you know, an extension and we're going to commit to figuring out, you know, some sort of reduction to recognize the hardship they're all experiencing. If we give, give it some time, we'll have more information on, you know, what their actual position is, what potential relief is in regards to lost revenue for the town. There's, there's just a lot more information we'll have by then that you'll be able to use to make a decision on an exact number.
I, I just, as I say, I have a comment from one of our day sailors and the comment is, I agree, we are in different places. I would be happy to pay 50%, but some cannot pay, I'm guessing. We'd be happy to meet with you guys. Thanks again for working with us.
I think we're right now is looking for a motion just to extend payment to October 1st and to work with them in this time period on other state monies you talked about care action, all this kind of thing. And we can determine the reduction at a later date. Say what?
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second in the discussion.
I just have a, a quick comment. I was, I was looking at the YouTube comments and Aaron Lincoln just wanted to let everyone know that him and a, a few of the other, I think, wind jammer, day sailor operators are, are listening. And if anybody has any questions.
No questions, just discussion from me to all of them is, we're going to work with you and we want to be fair. And we don't want anybody being overly damaged if, if they can't do it. If we have to go to zero, we go to zero. If we have to go to whatever percentage or make it more of a mark, we'll decide as the season unfolds. But they don't need to send us any money until October 1st as, at the earliest. So with that's any other discussion. Roll call vote, Allison.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Hi.
Jenna.
Hi.
And Bob, I also thank you very much. It's a complicated issue. We'll, we'll get through it together. Moving on to, we have three. Yes.
You forgot an item there on 40 paper.
Thank you. I was coming back to an idea. I'll go back to it now. Item five is the approval of requests for an extension of a liquor license for 40 people to expand outdoor seating during this time period. And there was a sketch in our package that basically going to put some tables on the sidewalk area in front of 40 paper. Any comments or from the select board members or motion?
I make a motion that we approve the request for 40 paper.
Discussion. Not hearing any, we'll go for roll call vote. Jenna.
Hi.
Taylor. Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Bob, I also thank you very much, Jeremy, for that.
Yeah, thank you. Josh will appreciate it.
I'm sure he will. We have a reappointment for three reappointments for town manager, road commissioner and the harbor master. We can take them one at a time. We can do them as a bunch.
I move that we reappoint the town manager pursuant to article two, section five of the town charter.
Second.
Discussion, roll call vote, Mark.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
Jenna.
Hi.
Hi.
And Bob, hi. Reappointment of road commissioner.
I move that we reappoint the road commissioner pursuant to title 23 MRS, section 2701.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mark.
Hi.
Hi.
Jenna.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
And Bob, hi. Thank you. Confirmation of the town manager's appointment, I'm sorry, reappointment of the harbor master pursuant to.
I move that we reappoint the harbor master pursuant to the harbor and waterways ordinance, article three, section three.
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Allison.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Hi.
Jenna.
Hi.
And Bob, I, last appointments are for confirmation of the town manager's appointments of the one, two, three, four in department heads listed in our, in our package.
I guess I'll do it again. Confirm me, I move that we confirm the town manager's appointments of the treasurer, tax collector, and the town clerk and department heads pursuant to article three of the town charter.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jenna.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
And Bob, I also thank you very much. We have a couple, three, actually, would be three more items on our agenda. Setting the date for the workshop where we discussed earlier for the priorities for planning and policy development. We discussed the, their rules of order also. Does anybody have any preference for a time to do that workshop? Obviously, we're probably talking into early October.
October.
I'm August, sorry. Can you get the date right? Into August. We obviously have select board meetings on the fourth and 18th. Does any day of the week work better for any of you a time of day?
I can say, I probably will be gone the week of the 17th. I will miss the, the, the select board on the 18th. I believe I'm not positive yet.
Okay.
Yet of town.
How about, how about August 10th, 12th, or 14th?
I would propose to give us some time, August 14th, to pull together some of the stuff that Audra and I need to pull together, we discussed earlier. August 14th is a Friday.
Could we do August 14th at like 10:00 AM or is that too much for people in the morning?
That, that could, 10:00 AM is good.
Good for me.
Allison.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Friday.
Friday is the day I do all my medical supply pickups at all the hospitals. So that's hard.
Did you do the, could you do the 12th Wednesday? Would that be better?
Well, can you, can you have a select for maybe the Thursday, the 13th?
13.
13th. Was it the week of the 24th too late?
I mean, I could do it early in the morning on the, on Friday. Jeremy waving his hand around quite a bit. I don't know if he has an opinion. Probably want Jeremy to be there too, though.
Well, I just want you to know, so the clerk sent around today, her, you know, semi-annual thing that we get on the, the timing for ordinance amendments and thing. I just want you to know that we probably won't have any in the works for November town meeting because the due date's August 4th. For those ordinance amendments. That's not a bad thing. I think we can figure out ways around that. I just wanted to let you know if it was going to be on the ballot. If there's going to be any amendment on the ballot, those have to be done by the planning board by August 4th. And there's no way to do that.
Nope.
Unless it doesn't need a planning board.
Well.
Unless they don't go to planning board. I just wanted to share that with you because if we're talking, eventually when we have this conversation, likely we'll be talking about things like housing options and how to do different things creatively zoning for housing increase.
Let's, let's try to play, let's talk about the 14th. Allison suggested early in the morning. What's really, Allison?
It's, I don't, I, nobody's going to like it, like eight, so that I could be done in time to do other things.
I'd prefer the 12th at 10 rather than the 14th at eight. I don't care.
The 12th a Wednesday?
Yes.
Yeah.
For me.
It is 12th.
So that's the morning after select word, that 10, that'd be fine.
All right.
Good for me.
Oh, there's no select board meeting that week. So you'd have.
There's no select board meeting that week. So 12th at 10 o'clock.
That works for me, yeah.
All right. That's.
That's good.
Yeah, I, I think I quoted wrong.
12 at 10, okay.
I'm putting it down.
Somebody send out an email.
Oh, definitely. Don't worry. We'll, we'll, we'll confirm. I've got it on the calendar. I won't forget it. We'll definitely send out an email, Allison. And also reminders for comments. Thank you very, very. Yeah, like, like an hour before. Yeah, okay, you got it. We did have, we would try to get, I believe, our friend, Mr. Schmelk from the state entomologist to talk about the brown tail moth this evening, but apparently he couldn't make it, Audra.
We didn't, we didn't even ask him.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we do have in the package quite a bit of information that I saw about the brown tail in particular. Some of the items that are very cogent right now with the actual moth being all over the place. A couple of things, I think the, I think that they would encourage the public to read some of these things and also to visit again, the, the YouTube video from our March select board meeting where he gave a very detailed presentation covering the whole gamut of the life cycle of the moth in, in live in that, in that month. But there is a lot of information in here and it's very cogent. I don't know what else to do with it at this point in time. If anybody wants to make some comments, do it now, Audra.
Um, I would say that there are portions of the FAQ that I highlighted and that was specific to the life cycle stage we're at right now, which is the adult moths that everybody, everybody is seen around. They're everywhere this year. They're, they're white. They have the, the brown tail as per the name. And in this frequently asked questions, it sort of gives you, it, for the, the management side of it, it makes recommendations on, you know, what can be done this time of year. So I think it's really important for the community to know that one of the biggest things that we can all do to, to try and, you know, help sort of control this, this pest is reducing the amount of outdoor lighting and just lighting in general because they're connected to light. That's something I think, you know, the town can, will, will be able to look at. We're installing new streetlights. So, you know, we'll certainly, you know, look for ways to reduce the amount of light pollution and, and the amount that we're attracting moths with, you know, municipally owned streetlights and lighting. And I think that if you're a, you know, a homeowner and you're concerned about brown tail moths, the best thing you can do is turn off your outdoor lights, reduce outdoor lighting. You know, there was, I think, one of the big things that is highlighted in here is the question of does, does killing the brown tail moth adults help with the management? And we've all learned, and it, it says it right here in the FAQ, that, you know, if you're trying to attract them with a light and then, you know, suck them up and, and kill them, you're really only attracting adult males. And that's not going to help with population control. So you're just better off kind of leaving them alone and turning off lights as much as you can with, with your, you know, outdoor lighting. So there's all kinds of other information about them in this packet. But that's, I think, the, the most important sort of management tips that we are getting from the state right now about what to do with this cycle in their life.
Allison.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so I've been trying to share on, you know, a bunch of information from the state on Facebook and have found the public to be remarkably resistant to the guidelines. And it's funny too, because it's like the same people that are really wanting to listen to the guidelines about the masks and the CDC are not interested in the idea of turning, they're really determined to try to kill the moths. And so being able to attract them and then kill them is satisfying, I think. And the opportunity to experiment from your own home too. But it would be nice, maybe if the town could do prac, I guess, practice what the state is preaching. And I know we keep, we are saying, oh, well, it's going to be great because we can dim and turn off the streetlights. How much is that? How quickly is that really going to happen and how how flexible can we really be with that? It seems like there might be other opportunities to turn off lights. And maybe just put a little sign that says, why is, you know, the village green flagpole light turned off? Well, did you know that blah, blah, blah? So I, I guess I, we, we don't have time to sit here and micromanage all the different places that we could turn off town lighting. But I would maybe wonder if the select board would lend support to the idea of the, of town staff just doing that on a discretionary basis if they identify opportunities to turn off lighting. I know Jeannie Hollingsworth has followed this quite a bit and has all kinds of suggestions. I'm sure others do too, but it seems like we could lead by example, turn off some lights in places and put some signs that say, this is why we're doing it.
Audrey, I, I don't think anybody in the select board has a problem with that. I just go ahead and go for it.
Yep, that's a simple, practical, easy thing we can do.
Yeah, definitely. And it does make a difference, even with the remediation that we did this year. We have had issues when we have outdoor lights on.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with it. And just an anecdote from the other day that sort of surprised me on how, I think, how much the lights really do make a difference. When I drive to work in the morning, it's still pretty much dark outside. I stopped for gas in a town north of Camden on route one, and the gas pumps were all lit up and they had been lit up all night. And when I pulled in for gas, there were literally hundreds of brown tail moths all over the gas pumps because it was bright white LED lighting.
It's so crazy.
Mark.
The interesting information, and I recommend anybody in the town, anybody watching this, please, please tell people to read all the information that Audra supplied. It's, it really gives you in-depth things about everything that's possible. But the one thing that was really interesting is most of the moths attracted by lights and attracted by those things are the males. And getting rid of them will not impact the infestation whatsoever, according to the information. It's the females and the females aren't attracted by the light. So you have to work on the nests. You have to work on the caterpillars and, and all of that. Really good information.
Yeah, I agree with that. Thank you very much. Now to Mark's comment earlier, actually, Mark forgot to put select board reports on the agenda. So I'll, I'll take the blame for that, but let's go to select board reports and start with you since you wanted to talk to select board.
Okay, a number of things, three things I want to mention. Number one, every week I mention, I talk about COVID-19. And I want to thank people in Camden. I'm seeing really good mask wearing in town. I'm seeing it good in stores. We are incredibly fortunate in Knox County. We have, according to the, the state guidelines, we have one active case and in the county, which, you know, is wonderful and it makes us all safer, but it also could make us lazy in our sticking to the rules as we've seen in other parts of the country. You know, there, there are some serious problems. Mask wearing is so important and I just appreciate everybody sticking to it and helping as, as we go through some tough times. So appreciate that. We're very lucky all to be in Maine and I'd like, I like being, I think Maine is listed as the sixth least state that has six, I don't know how to put it, it's number six in the least amount of, of cases of COVID-19, which is great. Let's keep it that way. Number two, we had a meeting last week. We're looking at the Snowball as a venue for doing some summer concerts. And it looks like we're going to try and do one in August where we're going to have band up on the stage and then people can use the hillside to put down a blanket and stuff. The first one will be restricted by the amount of people that the state allows. I think it's still 45 or 50 at this point. But this could be a wonderful venue for summertime concerts and bringing in some, some, you know, more popular acts as, as we do this. So next year, it may. it may be a great way to take advantage of using the Snowball in a, in a positive summertime way and bringing in food trucks and making it sort of an event. So we've been working on that, that the Opera House staff has been working really hard on this and, and in conjunction with the Snowball staff. So they're working together and it, it's, it looks like a great project. And number three, a downtown design group has been working as the parking lot, Mechanic Street Parking Lot has been working. They've been working on a design and we talked about this, the select board meeting quite a while ago, but they pretty much agreed and we have a mockup of a design. I'm going to share my screen and show you the mockup. But as the Mechanic Street Parking Lot gets finished, and let me go to the share screen button here. Where do I want to go? I want to go here. You can see that's, this is just a Photoshop thing of, it is nautical flags. They spell out the town, the town named Camden. It's, again, it's, this is a private wall owned by the business owner. He's given consent for this. The funds coming are from, from private funds. There's no town, town funds involved. And it's just a way to brighten up the wall next to the parking lot. And, you know, in a new way, we've looked at murals all over the country, and this is something unique. We haven't seen this anywhere else in the country using the nautical flags like this to sort of tie into the nature of the town. So that's just a mockup of how it's going to look. I hope everybody is happy with it. It's, it's very colorful and bright. And there will be a background painted on the, the cement, the, the raw cement there will sort of make it a little bit nicer than what we're seeing right there. But I just wanted to show everybody what the downtown design team has been working on. They've talked about this and it's been a lot of time working on this for over a year now. And hopefully, maybe come September, we'll, we'll have a nice looking wall that, you know, complements the new parking lot. And I gotta give compliments to Dave for the work on the part of the parking lot looks great. The new stairway looks terrific. It's going to be a real nice addition and a real bonus for the town. So that's it for me.
Thanks, Mark. Allison?
Um, yeah, just.
Let me turn this off. How do I turn this off?
I'm going to try to hijack the screen from Mark. It won't let me do it until Mark gives up control.
I'm trying to, how do I?
Just at the bottom, stop sharing.
I know it's not, I'm not seeing that come up, which is weird. Hold on. I think I have to do it this way. Hold on. Nope, that's not it. Ah, there we go. Stop share. It was at the top, strangely enough.
Okay. So the major thing is that this week we're starting the surveying of the river. Trying to do full screen here. So you might, in case you got any questions about this, we sent out notifications to property owners, but not everybody sees things as part of the coastal resilience grant we got from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. They are starting to survey the river and some of that will involve having surveyors walking through the river channel and also some lowering of the impoundment, specifically the Knox Mill impoundment. And then the, the Newton Street impoundment, which kind of stretches back toward the middle school. Today, they lowered the Knox Mill impoundment and it was, to me, really exciting. It's, everything's coated in sediment to a certain extent, but it was pretty beautiful to see all the boulders that were exposed and the, you know, historical geographic features that have been underwater for all of this time. And my, my kids had a, had a total blast being able to splash around. But it was kind of a, it's, if you get a chance, just, just take a look and use your imagination a little bit as to what, it reminded me a little bit of the, you know, the Duck Trap River and what that looks like and the idea of having that just going right through downtown. But they're going to be doing a lot of things. One of them is sampling the sediment, doing assessments on buildings, looking at the different types of wildlife that's present, a lot of things. So if anybody's interested in learning more about that, you can reach out to me or Audra and just in case you get any questions about why, why things are different. It's just temporary in order to kind of study the conditions. And that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Allison. Taylor?
Uh, nothing for me this evening.
Okay, Jenna?
I'm just going to share one really quick thing, which is that I received an email, and I think Allison may have as well, from a downtown business owner, just with some concerns about the flea market and just sort of future considerations, which I'm happy to share with all of you. I'll send an email out, but just considering the possibility that if it takes hold and continues, you know, what would a fee structure look like? Those kinds of things. And I really think that they had some salient points that I just don't want to, to not consider as we move forward with that exciting development at the Tannery. And that's it for me.
Sounds great. And as far as I'm concerned, no updates since the last time, but I'm certainly glad the, that we are, we are right now in July. But some, I guess with that, we really have completed, excuse me, we haven't, because, well, it's not specifically going to agenda in our packet, other financials for FY twenty. Got to get the dates right.
Oh, Bob, before we move on to that, I got, I've got one more thing to tell everyone. So there's another round of the Keep Me Healthy Grant Program that's being released. And I've been speaking with a, a few of the department heads and other staff who've been working on the first grant program. And, you know, given, you know, what we're doing right now, we've, we've got some ideas on how we can, you know, kind of have a very targeted funding request. So the deadline for that is the thirty-first of this month. And I am, I'm going to put in another grant application for more funds. It's the exact same program. It's assistance to businesses for healthy reopening, you know, supportive physical distancing in, in town, especially in, you know, the areas of like the downtown and the harbor where people congregate, as well as public education campaign. So we've got, we're, we're putting together a pretty targeted application. And that's sort of based on what we're seeing from this first round.
Anything else, Audra?
That's the big stuff right now.
Jeremy, you have something?
Yeah, just one thing. I wanted to, there'll be news, some media soon about the Maine Outdoor Film Festival that will be in Camden at the amphitheater. And working with Nick Callanan from Maine Outdoor Film Festival, that's going to be April twentieth. It's going to be a social distance event. We have to ticket it. It's a, we're maxed out at fifty people.
Jeremy, you mean August, not April?
No, July. Did I say?
You said, you said April.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, August. August twentieth. And it's going to be fifty people. It'll be social distance. There, again, it's ticketed. It's a fifteen dollar ticket. It'll be on Eventbrite. There'll be press releases very soon. Fourteen of, I believe it's fourteen of those dollars will be going to, of each ticket will be going to the library as a donation. So we're just sharing the wealth and spreading out, appreciating the library letting us do this there. Jeff Senders is also co-sponsoring this along, Senders Engineering and Sciences co-sponsoring this along with the town. It's a, just an event we're trying to do to bring some folks downtown and will be socially distanced and safe. Everyone will be wearing masks and we'll have in the amphitheater area, working with Nikki and Dave Jackson on that at the library. So we're, we're excited. It's going to be small, which could be bigger, but it is one event we're bringing to town this year.
Sounds great, Jeremy. Thank you very much. With that, I think we have, believe we can call to adjourn the select board meeting. And I'm sorry, yeah, adjourn the select board. Mark?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn the select board and reopen as wastewater commissioners.
Second.
Roll call vote, Taylor?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
And Bob, I five zero. Thank you. As wastewater commissioners, we have just two items. One is the rules of order and the wastewater appointments. In terms of the rules of order, if we're making any substantive changes or add or deletions, we probably should look at this at the same time on the date in August.
Agreed.
I, I'll just make one change right now. It still says that their meetings are held in the Washington Street Conference Room. And that, of course, would be the French Conference from now. And you ready for a, a motion for wastewater appointments?
We are.
Okay, I make a motion that we, we reappoint the following individuals to the indicated positions for the town of Camden effective July first. Audra Kaler, Chief Executive and Administrative Official of the Wastewater Department, and David Bolstrid, Superintendent of Wastewater Department.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jenner?
Hi.
Taylor. Oh, I see. I just saw your face, Taylor. Mark?
Hi.
Allison?
I looked away for just a second.
It's really him.
He's just here really fast.
Truck, you'll never notice.
I also.
Been texting during a meeting.
Oh, I see. Thank you very much. With that, we can adjourn as wastewater commissioners if I have such said motion.
I make a motion, we adjourn as wastewater commissioners, although Audra had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Audra. Did I miss something?
It wasn't really even a question. I just would be remiss if I didn't mention that we do have a lot of comments on YouTube from Julie Robinson. They're all focused around brown tail moth. And she's expressing some frustration that we haven't been reading the comments. So I just want to apologize to Julie. That's my fault. It's difficult with the twenty-second delay, but that's no excuse. I should have been monitoring it. So apologies, Julie.
Why don't we get those questions? We review them tomorrow and see how we can respond to them.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd be more than happy to respond because it's all stuff that we've discussed in previous. So I'd be happy.
Happy to help with that, Audra. We, we, we know it's difficult, it's a challenge, but that, that's, thanks for bringing that up. I appreciate that. I lost my track. We had a motion to adjourn commissioners. Have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Mark?
Hi.
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Allison.
Hi.
And Bob, I also five zero. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very, very much for all of your time this evening.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Night.
Taylor.